Burgian.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Make a motion, we excuse Peggy.
Second.
At this time...
Roll call.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Burgian.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have our invocation by Pastor Ken Corver from Emmanuel Reform Church.
Let's pray. We thank you for the blessing of this city. We thank you for decades of just great work being done. We thank you for our council and our staff. We pray that tonight you'd give them great wisdom, that they would continue to be servants and walk humbly. Pray for unity and wisdom from on high. We pray that each citizen would be served. So give wisdom now, allow us to love each other. We pray your blessing on this city for years and years and years. We thank you for what you've done. We ask that it would continue. Pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
May I have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Burgian.
Oh dear, my goodness, am I going one step ahead of myself? Or, okay.
No, you're behind.
Oh, no, I'm behind. At this time, we're going to have our presentations. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to stay seated. And we are going to share a video with the community, KABC video.
Yes, we are, Madam Mayor. As you know, on September 5th Paramount was featured extensively on the KABC Channel 7 morning show as part of a feature that Channel 7 is doing about the hometowns of their reporters. So it was reporter Annabelle Munoz's turn. And although she grew up in both Paramount and Bellflower, she chose to do the live broadcast in Paramount. So we were very honored to be chosen. And the timing actually worked out very nicely for us as we had just finished the renovation of the pond. So the broadcast took place with a very nice background. We also took advantage of the TV coverage to show off the Santa train as we prepared to embark on the 50th consecutive year of the train. So what you're about to see is all of the videos that featured Paramount throughout the whole two and a half hour of hours of the morning show compressed into a 15-minute compilation. This is also available on our website. And special thanks goes out to all the community members, the dance groups, the businesses, and the high school kids who joined us bright and early that morning at 4:30, as well as the city staff from Recreation and our Public Works Department for making this happen. So with that, we'll go ahead and roll the video.
Live from ABC 7, this is Eyewitness News.
Good morning to you. You know who that is right there, front and center? Annabelle Munoz. Annabelle Munoz in the neighborhood. She's in Paramount this morning. And we are going to find out how come it's Christmas. You know, last week it was Happy Haskell Day. So maybe this is Feliz Annabelle?
Yes, Feliz Annabelle. We love it.
I don't know what's going on with Santa and his helpers, but we're gonna find out together. Good morning, it's 4:30 in the morning. I'm Philip Palmer.
And I'm Leslie Sykes. Thank you for joining us. Yes, we're in the neighborhood this morning with Annabelle Munoz. She's in Paramount. And Lesley Lopez is off today, so Danny Romero is here. He...
Good morning. We are live in the city of Paramount. I'm with the Iceland Ice Cadets. It's bright and dark. If you want to join us, come on out. We'll be here all morning. Good morning, Leslie. Yes, ABC 7 is in the neighborhood. And this morning, we are in my hometown in Paramount. This is the pond. It just reopened. This is where the city has its Christmas tree lighting. And we're gonna show you a little bit more in just a little bit, so stay tuned.
It's Wednesday, and we have the music means it's in the neighborhood. And we're gonna check out the hometowns of our ABC 7 Eyewitness News anchors and reporters.
And today, it is Annabelle Munoz's turn. She joins us live from her hometown of Paramount. Annabelle, good morning.
Good morning, Leslie and Philip. You were asking, why is it Christmas in September? Well, let me tell you. Hello, everyone. So this train that you're looking at, this is the Santa train. You can see Santa's helpers and some passengers. This is one of my earliest childhood memories in the city. This train has been around since the 60s. And it goes to every little nook and cranny in the city so that Santa right here can deliver some goodies.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Merry Christmas from the city of Paramount.
Santa, you've been doing this for a really long time. Talk to me about what it's like to go to these neighborhoods and see all of those smiling faces.
Very amazing, very fun, lots of fun. We've been doing it for 50 years, the city of Paramount.
Sorry. This is my childhood best friend. I didn't know she was gonna be here. Good morning. This is Gloria Yvara. She got high school together. Sorry, sidetracking a little bit now. Most unique laugh in high school. You'll see why later. Santa, I apologize.
Fifty years we've been doing it here in the city of Paramount. We give out 28,000 candy canes and apples, and we go out throughout the whole city. Lots of fun, lots of smiling faces. We have a great time.
Thank you so much. So we're gonna send it back to you. I'm gonna catch up with Gloria, and we'll be back in a little bit.
How about Santa surprising Annabelle?
That is so cool.
That's good stuff.
That's good.
See, Santa does come in September.
Look at that. See?
That was pretty neat.
I was wondering what she was screaming about. Whoa. That's cool, very cool. And wait, that little train goes to every nook and cranny in Paramount? I never knew that. Can you believe that?
I thought maybe like a nook here, maybe not a cranny.
Yeah, yeah.
And Annabelle knows where the crannies are too.
There she does, that's her place. That's her home.
We're in the neighborhood this morning, and today we're all about, oh, donuts.
I've always liked Annabelle.
Yes.
Until now.
She's so sweet.
Why?
What's she doing that? Look at that.
Look at that, look at that.
Those are bite-sized looking little things.
And Bellflower, the hometowns of Annabelle Munoz. We're gonna check in with her a little bit later. That's a special donut place. That ain't just any old donut, like you know. Five o'clock, good morning, I'm Leslie Sykes.
I'm Philip Palmer, and she's taunting us.
Yes, she is.
You know, Danny's my favorite now.
I didn't get to show you this earlier because Gloria here surprised me, but these are the treats Santa's helpers hand out during the Santa train, some candy canes and apples. I know, Philip, you wanted a donut, but I'll bring you back an apple and a candy cane. You too, Leslie.
They look so pretty.
We're back in the neighborhood this morning talking about Paramount and Bellflower.
And that's where Eyewitness News reporter Annabelle Munoz grew up. Today, she's showing us some of what makes that place so special.
From the time I was born, the city of Paramount was home. It's where my grandmother Lolita lived. My whole family and I spent summer days at the local pool. And years later, I came back to work there. Welcome to Paramount Pool. This is where I had my second favorite job after being a reporter, is being a lifeguard.
You would be surprised about how many kids come here that have no way of knowing how to swim, just like you said yourself.
When I was 10, we moved to Bellflower where I attended Ramona Elementary. This was Yuri and Rebecca and Jesus.
We believe we build futures in Bellflower, and the fact that we had a role in yours is amazing.
Thank you so much.
Some are teachers in our district, some are engineers, some are NFL football players, and some are journalists and on TV, like you.
Yes, thank you so much. So I am a Buccaneer. Go Bucks. I ran through these halls a lot, constantly running late to my classes because some things never change. You might not remember me, but I remember you.
Of course I do, and he said Annabelle Munoz, and I was like, oh my God, you're working for ABC?
I am. Mrs. Nicoletti was my US government teacher. It was one of my favorite courses. And this is my class.
This is your class, yes.
That's so amazing. I'm right here. What's with that makeup? I spent a lot of time both inside the ASB office when I was senior class president and outside of it when the cheerleaders would practice right over here. Mrs. Darling, an English teacher at BHS, was on the team with me.
I remember we got in trouble at cheer camp.
We did?
We did, because we were up past curfew. W-I-N, go for the win.
Oh, wait, keep doing it.
You're messing it up, Annabelle.
Before I left campus, I wanted to thank some of the people who take on one of the hardest jobs, our high school counselors.
I love the students, the teachers. It's like a second home.
I wanted to make a difference with the people around the local area. It's very meaningful, especially stories like yours.
A big part of why Bellflower was so special is because there was a number of people here that really cared, and I really experienced that with you, so thank you so much.
That's very nice.
It's true.
That's nice. Oh my gosh, and let's bring in Annabelle. She is live this morning in Paramount. Annabelle.
Hi.
Hey.
Yes, huge thank you to the city of Bellflower. Huge thank you to the city of Paramount, which is where we are right now. All of these lovely people got up so early to be here with us this morning. And this is a special city, let me tell you. And I have the city's mayor, Diana Martinez, with me. Thank you so much for being with us, Mayor. You were actually one of the first people I ever interviewed when I was in college, so thank you. What makes Paramount so special?
I believe the people in this community make it special. We have our service clubs, our elected officials, our school board members, our fire department and sheriff's department. We all come together for a common goal, and that common goal is to bring quality of life to the residents of this community.
So a huge part of Paramount, something that I really love, is that it really invests in the children. This year, we had Dia del Niño. You have all of these activities. How important is it for the city to invest in young people?
It's very important to invest in this community. For several years, we have raised over a million dollars for our seniors for college scholarships.
Incredible.
And we support our youngsters in pursuing their dreams in college.
So kind of a funny story here. That first interview I had with you, I don't remember, is actually, I don't know if you remember, we were right here for the Christmas tree lighting, and I was interviewing you. So I held out the mic, and you were like holding it, and I was pulling it back. So we had a little tug of war, do you remember?
You know, I kind of, I vaguely remember.
That's okay, but you did a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone, and this is not it. We are going to stay in the city of Paramount and bring you some more stories in just a little while. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Annabelle. I mean, I just, Danny, when you, when you both guys did it, it's just so much fun to actually see the communities, see where you grew up, talk to the people who watch her every day now.
And exactly. And then people, they just hear about these communities, maybe they have not been there, but these little communities all across Southern California, they were great to grow up in.
You know, I've talked to friends from other parts of the country, and they're like, oh yeah, LA, it's all like... And they think LA is like, it's like a 0.5% thing, it's all Hollywood or Beverly Hills.
Exactly.
But what we're showing is LA.
Right.
Spectacular.
SoCal, that's what it is, and then the SoCal weather.
We're in the neighborhood right now. Oh, what, Annabelle brought swords.
Wow.
We're talking about Paramount and Bellflower, where Annabelle Munoz grew up. We'll check back with her in just a bit.
Look at that, like machetes.
Skill, right there.
Yes, it is.
Careful.
Just beautiful, the color.
And today is all about community, and we have Ontario in the house. I see some familiar faces. This lovely family, Romualdo, is a loyal ABC 7 eyewitness, one of the youngest reporters in LA County. And he came out to say hello. What do you think about these segments?
This is a perfect way to support our local reporters. So come on out if you're in the area, Paramount.
Thank you, thank you so much. We'll be back in a little while.
We are in the neighborhood today, talking about Bellflower and Paramount. And that's where we find Eyewitness News reporter Annabelle Munoz. That's where she grew up. She's out there live until 7:00 this morning at the pond near the intersection of Jackson and Paramount. Hey, Annabelle.
Good morning. Philip, we have Paramount High School in the house. We also have the owners of Orchateria Rio Luna and Donuts in Downey in the house. You guys have blown up. We have their social media coordinator here, Raoul Ramirez. You're even moving because it's too small for you. How's the support been?
We love the support. We're really happy to be here, and I just want to thank the community and businesses for always having our back here. And thank you to the city of Paramount, we love you.
Thank you, we love you so much. And we also have Erin Dunnay in the house from Altair Paramount. You do something pretty incredible. Talk to me about this local business you have.
So we make a renewable fuel from non-food-grade feedstocks such as beef fat and vegetable oils. And so we make jet fuel, biodiesels, and various other products like that, so...
Thank you so much, Erin. And also the Paramount Drive-In. We have Darren Kirkowski. The Drive-In took a 22-year hiatus, it came back in 2014. Where can we find it, and what makes it so unique?
We're right on the corner of Paramount and Rosecrans, right up the street here, about a half a mile away. And again, initially opened up in 1947. We took a 22-year intermission, and then we came back in 2014. It's been going strong ever since. Whole new generations of families are coming out enjoying a drive-in for the very first time.
You have the things that the city of Paramount has to offer. Thank you so much for joining us, Philip and Leslie. We'll send it back to you, but we are not done in the city of Paramount. We'll be back.
And good morning in Paramount. We are back in the neighborhood this morning, checking out the hometown of our very own Annabelle Munoz.
ABC 7 is in the neighborhood, and we have Paramount High School in the house. Big shout out to the Army JROTC, the football team, we've got the cheerleaders, and the marching band right over here.
We are back in the neighborhood this morning.
Right today, we're checking out the hometown of Annabelle Munoz. She's live in Paramount at the Paramount Pond. Good morning, Annabelle.
Good morning, Philip and Leslie. We are still out here in the city of Paramount, and I have two very special ladies with me here. I have my younger sister Diana. How you doing, sis?
I'm good.
What do you want to share with Philip and Leslie? You watch them all the time.
They're pretty great, just like you.
I told her to say that. She's a little camera shy, but following similar footsteps in TV production, hard worker, two jobs. And I have Gloria over here. We went to elementary school, we went to high school together, we went to college together, we studied abroad together, we lived in the dorms together, we had matching outfits in high school and college. Best friend here, and surprised me, Glow. And you also led me to one of my favorite jobs, which was lifeguarding. You started at first. What did you love about doing that job together?
My favorite part was honestly the kids, and when I taught senior water aerobics, those ladies held on to me for dear life because they didn't know how to swim. And it was just so many memories, so fun, so motherly, it was great.
Yeah, we had some really good times at the pool. And I will say, one of the coolest gifts that you can give anyone, a child or an adult, is that life skill of learning how to swim. Ladies, anything else you want to share before we send it back to them?
Nope, she's more shy than us.
No, they're both more shy. All right, Leslie and Philip, I'll send it back to them, we'll be back in a little bit.
Annabelle, I tell you what we want to know. Ask your best friend to tell us a funny story about you.
Yeah, a little cheese man, come on.
Come on, come on, we need a little bit. Come on, somebody's got a story.
Philip wants ghee, funny story about me, Gloria. You are not censored, you can share whatever you want.
Annabelle can't cook. She burns frozen biscuits in the microwave. All of our lunches. She also can't drive. There was a big rig behind us once, and she literally just stopped.
All right, all right, that's enough. I can't drive and I can't cook, we got it.
She was ready with those at the tip of her tongue. They just started coming out. That's what, there we go, thank you.
You know what, we now have something that we can say to everyone.
Yes.
You burn biscuits in the microwave.
Burn biscuits.
I mean, it used to, it was you can't boil water. Now it's, you burn biscuits in the microwave. We're in the neighborhood today, and we're talking about Bellflower and Paramount.
And that's where Eyewitness News reporter Annabelle Munoz grew up, and she is out live at the pond in Paramount. Hey, Annabelle.
Hey, Leslie and Philip. You met my sister earlier, but my mom made it out, a loyal ABC 7 Eyewitness News viewer. She has a shout-out. Hi, Leslie, hi, Danny, hi, Philip. All right, and my mom is actually a huge reason behind why I love dancing so much. And we have the Latinas Arts Academy right here. Take a look at these lovely ladies. You saw them earlier doing a dangerous but fun dance with machetes. And I have Delee Perez, who helps run this organization. Talk to me about what you do and how many members you have in the city.
We have about 50 members, 50 dancers in the city. And then we're able to teach them and influence the Latino Arts Academy culture through, you know, music, dance. And we do a lot of workshops for them, and it's open to all the public here in the city of Paramount.
So you were telling me earlier, we were watching the girls dance with the machetes. This is actually traditionally something the gentlemen do, but you've kind of mixed things up. Why is that?
The reason is like, because women can do it too. We're all about the women empowerment, and we love that the girls can also do anything that they want to do, that they set their minds to it. So if the guys can do it, so can we.
Amen to that, sister. And I think having the opportunity to perform in front of crowds really helps them break out of their shell. What kinds of improvements do you see with children and young adults in terms of just their self-confidence through dance?
A lot of socializing, a lot of getting to know each other, being able to open up and learn about each other's cultural differences as well.
Thank you so much, Delee. So the Latinas Arts Academy, and we will send it back to you with this beautiful dance. And we still have one more goodbye before we leave the city of Paramount here.
It is beautiful, it is beautiful. Thanks, Annabelle. Tell your sister hi for me, your mom.
We'll leave you with a shot from Paramount, thanks to Annabelle Munoz and everybody who came out for our In the Neighborhood event this morning.
Very nice. Very, very nice, thank you. Where my colleagues, please join me at the podium. A video showing off our city. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Tonight, we are recognizing some special members of the Paramount community. Would Detective David Van Dyke please join us? Detective Van Dyke, there he is. In July, Paramount deputies responded to a call regarding a gunshot victim in Long Beach. They were told that the victim said he was shot at Progress Park. Detective Van Dyke conducted an investigation of the incident. Through his superb interviewing skills and strong sense of intuition, he was able to gain the truth. The victim later admitted to the detective that he had lied about the incident occurring at Progress Park, and that he had actually shot himself in the leg in Long Beach. Detective Van Dyke's perseverance and talent helped reveal the truth of an alleged crime taking place in our city. This dedicated approach to law enforcement is one way to help our community feel safer about their parks. Tonight, we recognize Detective David Van Dyke for his excellent work. Thank you. With Sergeant Pasquale Dino Aiello, please come forward. Sergeant Aiello leads our special assignment team. During his tenure here, he has become a truly significant asset for both our residents and city staff. By holding community meetings and other forms of outreach, and fostering a dynamic communication network, the sergeant provides excellent solutions to maximize public safety in our community. He is a professional who represents the best aspects of community policing, especially in the sense of including our residents in the ongoing conversation. To that end, he has spent countless hours at city events and having other interactions with community members. This devotion of hours and energy is very much appreciated. We are lucky to have Dino Aiello on our team, and want to thank him this evening. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. I did not know this was coming. So this was a surprise. I gotta say, I've worked several cities in my 17 years in law enforcement, and I gotta say, the city and the residents are second to none. I actually feel like this is part of my home. So I didn't prepare anything, but thank you, okay? Thanks, everyone.
As you probably know, Paramount has a number of commissions filled with residents who act as advisors to the city council. These cover topics like public safety, planning, and so on. A few years ago, we added our youth commission to the mix so we could hear the thoughts and concerns of our high school students. There are 16 members, all of them unpaid volunteers in the 9th through 12th grades, and enrolled at either Paramount High or a private school. The current commission has 15 students from Paramount High School and one from St. John Bosco Catholic High School. This year, six of our commissioners are serving their second term, and one has served all three years of the commission's existence. Those members have three stars on their shirts over the city logo. This is a sharp group of young adults committed to Paramount and full of creative ideas and a deep curiosity about the world around them. Tonight, we would like you to meet this year's youth commissioners. Please come up when I call your name. Crystal Angiano. Tiana Zabalos. Alan Garcia. Joseph Garcia. Stephanie Garcia. Erica Jimenez. Jacqueline Lopez. Hemana Macardo. Brandon Pastolin. Jocelyn Penna. Ethan Percy. Jaylene Perez. Raul Pacencia. Jocelyn Ramirez. Angie Vasquez. Gustavo Vasquez. Thank you for your service, for your time, for your thoughtfulness. Oh, did I miss someone? No, Gustavo, you're Gustavo? Yay. Thank you for your service, for your time, for your thoughtfulness, and for hopefully leading our city into the future. Thank you so much. Please join us for a photo. leading our city into the future. Thank you so much. Please join us for a photo. Joining us now are some more of Paramount's finest young people. These individuals took part this year in State Senator Ricardo Lara's Young Senators Program. Two of them you just met as members of the youth commission. Please welcome all of them along with Mark Hanson from the Senator's Office. Brianna Ferraro, Luisa Gonzalez, Jocelyn Munoz, Jose Pata, Jaleen Perez, Roel Placencia, Nicole Reyes. The program provides high school students with insights about potential career and educational paths. They explore the industries, professions, and social interventions that are critical to our state's economy. They meet the leaders of our state's public and private sectors. They are in fact, the next generation of California leaders. We are proud that so many are from Paramount this year. We're going to take a photo and then the council members will take our seats while our young senators share their experiences about the program. Please join us for a photo.
Good evening Mayor, council members. My name is Mark Hanson. I work with Senator Ricardo Lara's office and it's a pleasure to be here with you today, especially to present our young senators. And I'm not going to take too much time because it's really their show, but I just wanted to tell you how proud the senator is and our office has been for all the work that they've done. They've attended a number of educational opportunities, including visiting UCLA and a number of other places where they've learned a little bit about policy, a little bit about steps along the way to their future. But this is a hugely important activity, this engagement in civic affairs. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to our first young senator.
Hello, my name is Brianna Fiero. I am a member of the Young Senators Program. To begin with, this program has dramatically improved me as an individual and as a student. By becoming a young senator, I've learned to effectively use my free time to help communities and inform the public of all of the information that I've learned from the several trips that we've attended and gradually make new connections. Being involved with the Young Senators Program has given me numerous opportunities to reach out to different communities and different ethnic backgrounds. It's also allowed my knowledge of just how important relationships between private and public sectors within the state are to expand. Understanding the economic system through educational trips, as mentioned, our UCLA trip regarding state budget affairs, all the way up to traveling to our state Capitol, attending a mock session. The program has provided me with generous amounts of resources to educate myself to become a better leader in the state. And overall, this program has been a very enriching and enlightening experience, one in which I look forward to passing on with others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Reyes. I am currently a senior at PHS and this has been my first year participating in the Young Senators Program. Being a part of this program has allowed me to strengthen my communication and networking skills. Through the opportunities that the Young Senators Program has provided, I have made lasting connections that are sure to benefit me and my goals. With the help of this program, we have supported and helped our own and neighboring cities through community service. This aspect not only facilitated connections, but is also responsible for instilling in me a pride in our city and its citizens. This has been happening through community service events such as cleaning up the LA River, planting trees in Linwood, and helping our city-sponsored events such as the Heritage Festival. What drew me to this program was Senator Ricardo Lara's commitment to environmental issues. This has influenced my decision to pursue an education in environmental policy. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jaleen Perez and I am another member of the Young Senators Program. Sorry. My experience with the Young Senators has been like no other. I have been a member in multiple programs, but none have opened doors for countless opportunities like this one. Thanks to the Young Senators, I now have connections to several different admission offices. I have connections to alumni and I have connections to other people my age from other high schools. Thanks to this program, I learned the school and student culture from other high schools outside of Paramount. I made a lot of new friendships that have already benefited me so much school-wise. And I am currently applying to universities and I plan on pursuing the degree in political science. And thankfully, I got the opportunity of a lifetime for a head start and an inside look on what my life would be if I took on a career in this field. After this program, I know for sure that I want to one day have a place in politics and make a positive difference in the world around me. I am glad I applied to this program. I am glad I got accepted and I am glad to be here today to inform you on the amazing experiences program provided me. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roel Placencia and I am currently a senior at Paramount High School. Joining Senator Ricardo Lara's Young Senators Program has allowed me opportunity after opportunity of educational experiences, as well as the ability to visit multiple locations ranging from the UCLA campus to the Port of Long Beach. It has enhanced not only my communication skills, but has built up my confidence. Furthermore, this has allowed me to build friendships amongst other young senators, initiating relationships both friendly and business-wise that would not have been possible because of this problem. I mean, this program might that. I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous. Okay, so usually when we learn about policies, we read it straight from a textbook, but this program has allowed me to not only see the facts, but it brings a human aspect to it with Senator Ricardo Lara's stance on environmental policies, as well as his policies on further uniting not only minorities to the United States and especially California, but the LGBT community. And that is something that I find completely amazing and that's the reason why I joined. His inclusivity and unity is absolutely needed at this time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Munoz and I'm also a senior at Paramount High School. And being a part of the Young Senators Program has definitely impacted my outlook in politics. And Ricardo Lara being the role model as he is, as he fights for LGBTQ rights and for immigration and environmental policies, he's definitely set a really great example and has taught me that it doesn't matter where you come from or where your background may be, but it depends on you and what you want to do and what you want to be. You know, knowing that the fact that he was born and raised in East LA and then knowing like his struggles and also being able to go to USC really influenced me and really, you know, made me think, hey, you know, if he can do it, I can do it. And through that, it has definitely positively impacted me. And throughout the program, we've been able to go to a lot of field trips like to Stanford, to UC Davis, to Tesla, and being able to interact with other people and being able to hear their stories and how they're able to go through these obstacles and still become impactful people in their community. And I aspire to do that as well. So that's why I'm very thankful to be a part of the Young Senators Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Luisa Gonzalez and I'm also a senior here at Paramount High School. From the moment I found out I was a part of the Young Senators Program, I was really excited to get to know a lot of new people, especially in this program. I've met many people from the college tours to our sessions every now and then. We get to go, like we've been to Tesla, we've been to UCLA, and I've just been very thankful to meet such interesting people because it's given me like a new outlook on life and given me more of an opportunity to see what I want to eventually look into when I go into college. So I'm very thankful.
Hi, I'm Suapara and I'm a junior from Paramount High School. When I first found out that I was in the program, I was happy, but then I got scared and sad because I knew I was really shy. Thanks to this program, it allowed me to become more outdoors, to talk to more people, and to explore. I've visited many colleges, even Tesla, and my friends can't even believe it. So I'm just glad that I'm able to join the program with amazing people. That shows me amazing things. I've been to places, wait, now I'm just repeating myself. It's just amazing. I guess, I even met the senator, which was an amazing moment in my life because I never thought I could do this. And it also opened doors to open my eyes to see that a minority like me, I can do amazing things too if I just put my heart into it. Thank you.
Mayor Martinez, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share this program and certainly encourage, continue to encourage youth in Paramount to participate. We hope that they get a lot out of it. Do you have questions?
No, I just want to say that the future of Paramount looks very bright here tonight. And you're doing a great job. And all the people on the commission, the youth on the commissioner, hey, you're doing a great job. And like I said, one gentleman was standing beside me up here. You're probably going to be up here someday. And one of my kids might be standing beside you or my grandson. So thank you very much. Job well done.
I'd also like to congratulate you for completing the program. And I like your positive attitudes, your optimism, and continue to have that positive attitude in life and persevere. So thank you so much and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
I have one question also. One question. How many students are involved in this just with Senator Lara?
This year, roughly 20. And that's pretty common.
Is that approximately what we have all the time?
That's right. Do you know the exact number? Closer to 30? Closer to 30, but I believe Paramount is the largest group.
Great job too. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
You guys talked about being inspired. Seeing all of you stand in front of me, you inspire me. As I mentioned to a couple of you, I'm a PHS alum. And to see how smart you guys are and how articulate you are, and to the women who are seeking positions in politics and you want to do the political science route, good for you. Because if you don't do it, somebody else is going to do it. So put your, you know, how can I say it without using any bad words? Put your best foot forward and never take no for an answer. When they tell you no, you keep hitting those walls until somebody says yes. So congratulations.
Okay, at this time, we will have City Council Public Comments updates.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one from the September 18th council meeting that needs some follow-up. And that was from Resident Ms. Holly Enriquez. And her concern or issue was domestic violence. As a follow-up to this, staff met with the nonprofit group Sucasa for more information about how to better promote their services in town. And we will continue to meet with them and seek their advice as far as how to better promote that. In addition, the city sent Sucasa a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And that concludes that report. Happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a public comment card?
You called my public comment card?
Not yet. No, I was going over the follow-up from the last meeting.
Oh, that was my public comment card. Okay.
Okay. Since you're here.
Do you want to do that one first?
Yeah, that was the response. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So I am following up on the public comment as City Manager Mr. Moreno said. And it was last September 18th where I was asking for the city to acknowledge this month, October, as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month and to recognize survivor stories. I also asked that the city partner with local NPOs, nonprofit organizations such as Sucasa, to provide culturally sensitive and appropriate services to community. And at that time, I was made aware that the city already had a partnership. I do want to thank the city for reaching out to Sucasa just a few days after the last city council meeting and opening up that line of communication. But it was brought to my attention by the Director of Development and Community Services, Dean Lockwood, at Sucasa, that although the city had been providing some funds to Sucasa, there was actually no real partnership and there was actually no communication between Sucasa and the city. Dean, the Director of Outreach and Engagement at Sucasa, said normally partner cities reach out to them so that they can provide workshops and provide information such as resources to distribute to the community or to table at events. So now that a line of communication is open, and hopefully after their meeting conversation with John Moreno and also with the Community Services Recreation Director David Johnson, I hope that a true partnership with this nonprofit will exist in Paramount and not just a financial one. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Moving on to the public comments, we do have two public comment cards that deal with a couple of items on the agenda, so we'll get to those when we approach those items. That is item number 11 and Mr. Marcus Laurent. And if he's still in the audience, we will go ahead and call you up when that item's heard. And then also with item number 12, Parking on Rosecrans, Mr. Dreher's in the audience and he's available for any questions or if he would like to address the council. So we'll get to those. Now, as far as general comments go, Madam Mayor and council, we do have five cards. Our first one is from Ms. Cindy Nelson, and she has general comments regarding housing development. Ms. Nelson?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I just wanted to ask what was going on with the uncompleted housing development on Indiana and Somerset. It's been a dirt lot for, I would say, two years or longer. I look today beyond the fence and the weeds are this high. So there's no activity whatsoever. I have a property down that street and I have to see that every day that I go down that street. And I've meant to come earlier, but I just didn't get a chance because the neighbors, to the day that my dad died, would complain to him about this lot. There's just, I mean, the sign says coming soon. I guess their definition of coming soon and my definition of coming soon. I guess their definition of coming soon and my definition of coming soon are two different things. But from what I understand, the same developer wants to now come in and build more housing, which I don't agree with because it's near one of the metal companies that keep violating, but that's another story. But I would think common sense would dictate that you finish one project before you start another. So I was wondering if the city could possibly light a fire under them to get something going? It's, you know, the neighbors are complaining, it's a dirt lot, there's, you know, it looks horrible, horrible. And it doesn't seem like there's anything going to be done anytime soon. So, thank you for listening.
Yes, as a follow-up to that, Madam Mayor, we have been in touch with the developer and he has run into some financial issues. That's what the delay is. Apparently, he is back on track with the financial situation that he experienced. So from our understanding, that he's going to start very soon, and hopefully that'll be the same definition as soon, we're hoping to, Ms. Nelson. And we are unaware of him entering into another project. Yeah, we don't, we're unaware of him.
Ms. Nelson, I also addressed our city manager regarding that concern as well because I've had residents come to me as well, so.
And in the meantime, Madam Mayor, too, and Council, we'll, we'll go after him for the weeds. That is an issue, obviously, so we will definitely.
Thank you.
Sure. Our next speaker's card is from Mr. Ardi, and he wants to discuss with the council last month's rezoning from a business to residential.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Last month, I came by and it was, it was some sort of, a developer wanted to come in and change a business to a residential. And I was just, it was a lot to digest, just like a big steak. I had to take it home and figure out what was going on. And I kind of, as I was going through it, it was basically, the developer was asked, you know, it was about the chromium 6 and it being close to the residential. I think he said he wants to put 12 homes up there. And they asked if he cared, and his first answer was, yeah, I care. And then the second was, well, what are you going to do about it? And then he was like, well, why are you asking me? Ask the people that are polluting, the factory that's polluting. That's called the scenic route of, I don't care. So what I did is, I'm not a chromium 6 expert, so what I did is, I actually called the top universities in California, UCLA, UC Riverside, UC Merced, and UCLA. And I talked to the head of the health, public health department, and shocking enough, they all answered their phone calls. And I talked to them about chromium 6, and I told them about the situation. And they were like, this, this is insane. And they said, well, let's talk to another expert. And they hit me to the head of University of Arkansas, a man named Pat Deirdre. And I told them the situation, and he was like, he's like chromium 6 is nothing to play around with, it's no joke, but if the factory's closed down two years ago, then you should be fine. And I was like, I didn't tell you they closed down two years ago. They're, they're still up and they've had these issues. He goes, that's insane that that's happening in California. He thought everyone here is all, you know, environmentally conscious and things like that. And I asked them a follow-up question. I'm like, would you move into a place that's half a mile from what I told you? He goes, absolutely not. And this guy lives in Arkansas. So the idea is, we are, I don't, the state of times of America is, the head of the EPA is Captain Sludge. The state, Jerry Brown is, he, I don't know, he's void of reality of what the major issues are of the state. So we need the local people, the local councilmen, to be tough on these situations. If we're expecting developers and factory owners to make some sort of consciousness about our health, you're crazy to think that. And what if someone does come and they buy this place and this person gets cancer? And then they find out, oh, we as a city changed it from business to residential, who do you think they're going to sue first? The developer, false. The factory, probably not. They're coming for the big bucks. They're going to come for us. They're going to come for our money. So I don't understand, we can play tough with these people, with these factories, with these developers. We don't need to bow down to them. If they don't like it, they can leave. We're in Los Angeles. These areas, these lands are precious. Don't let them pollute you. Don't let them, don't let them dictate the situation. We don't need them, they need us. Let's get tougher, let's get serious on this matter, and not let's not wait for a developer to tell us what we need and don't need. Thank you.
No, Ardi is, no, Ardi is not one of my relatives. I just want to say that for the record.
Our next speaker, Madam Mayor, is Ms. Andrea Crowe from the Paramount Library. Ms. Crowe?
Good evening.
Good evening, Andrea.
Mayor Martinez, council members in the city of Paramount. Every Saturday morning in October from 10:30 to 11:45, Paramount Library is hosting parent-child workshops. Parents and their children ages zero to three will spend the morning playing, singing songs, and socializing. A child development resource specialist will also be in attendance to answer questions. A child's brain develops at a rapid rate from infancy to the age of three, so please join us for this fun and important opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Our next speaker, Madam Mayor, is Anna Ruth Garcia, and she wants to discuss with the camp, oh, with the council, her campaign. Ms. Garcia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Anna Ruth Garcia, and I worked at Compton College for 20 years. And this year, they asked me if I can be a board trustee. So I'm here reaching out for you, for your votes. And this is my information, my name, November 6. I just want to let you know that I worked at Compton for 20 years. Last year, they discontinued my program, so I became unemployed. But this year, they reached out, the federation employee, to be a board member. I am from El Salvador. When I left my country at the age of 16, I didn't have no idea that I was going to be even in the ballot, you know, my name. I had other dreams. Some of them were to help my family. I was the oldest, the youngest of 18, and I wanted to help them. I did it, and I'm proud. But now that I'm in this board trustee new journey, I'm asking you, please, vote for me. There is other person in the ballot, but I'm reaching right here, so please give me your vote. What I can do, what I will do if I've been elected, is to bring new programs to the college and also bring us together, meaning Paramount and Compton. I know there is a little bit of a distance, Compton and Paramount, and I would like to bring that together. Let me tell you why. Because when I moved to Paramount in 1989, my first choice to go, it was adult school, is when I finished my, my high school. And I finished my certificate, and then I went on to Compton and get my, got my AA. Then I went to university, finished my bachelor's degree, then my master's degree, and I currently working for my doctorate. And all of that is, I'm doing it in the name of my family. Because you come here for, for a dream, and I believe there is still more to come. And I thank you, please, I have some information November 6. And I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Madam Mayor, is Mr. Alvin Parks. He wants to discuss praise. Mr. Parks?
Madam Mayor, council members, I was going to say this last month, but I didn't. A praise, one of the reasons I live in this city these 35 years, because what happened tonight here? Watching this thing on Channel 7, excuse me, I get emotional, and all these wonderful people here that, I don't know these students, but what happened on September the 7th at Doubles here on Paramount Boulevard and Somerset, the restaurants here on the south east corner there? Saturday morning, I went to get my meal and Officer Deputy was right in front of me getting his meal, and I waited behind him. I looked to my left and about 20 or 25 young adults came in the restaurant, and I thought, oh, good, I'm glad I'm in line before all these people, I want to order my breakfast. But they all apparently seemed to be together. They came and sat down together in a group, and apparently what they had did, I had already ordered their food. And it looked like maybe possibly special needs adults, you know, young adults. So I'm sitting there waiting, and all the sodas are on the counter there, and their food was being made. It all had large soda and a french fry and so forth on the tray. To my amazing, this officer, on his own, got two sodas at a time, took them to the people, came back, got two more, took them to the people, served all the people there in his uniform, and then served everyone their tray. I was just so touched by that because I know he did it from his heart, and this stuff, you know, just amazed me. And my point being, if I hadn't told them, I'd never know about that. I did talk to the lieutenant about that and tell him about it already, share with him. And I didn't know his name, and I found his name was Deputy Mike Abbott. So you might want to consider somebody like him next time. He did it from the heart. And just to watch a guy do that, because I know that deputies and so forth get bad reviews and negative stuff, but there's a lot of good people in this city. I just want to recognize Deputy Mike Abbott. That was it.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
That's the last one for now.
Item number, pardon me. Consent calendar, please.
Make a motion, we approve.
Standby. Number nine, we can take that off the consent calendar, then we can approve everything else. I just have a nay vote on number nine.
Okay, we'll go ahead and approves items 6, 7, 8, and 10. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gillian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. At this time, we will discuss item nine. Ms. Gillan?
Number nine, as it occurred at the last city council meeting, I had a negative vote on building those houses in that area, .5 miles from Anaplex, which, you know, was recently shut down, you know, less than two months ago. Has continually been shut down after they've had a stipulated order not to produce more chromium 6 than the one nanogram. And on several occasions, they've had to be shut down. And to my dismay, they get to keep reopening and spewing hexavalent chromium, chromium 6. So for that reason, I vote no on ordinance number nine.
May I have roll call, pardon me, may I have a motion? On, yes. What's your pleasure?
One second.
I have a motion by Hanson, a second by Hofmeyer. May I have roll call, please, on item number nine?
Councilmember Gillian?
No.
Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Number 11, Resolution Number 18027. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council, this next item involves a live entertainment application by the De Lucia Bar. Last month, the council directed us to work with the applicant to develop a parking plan. We did that and we're now bringing it back for you for approval. And with that, I will hand it over to our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chun, who will handle the item. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, John, and good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is a follow-up item regarding the city council permit application for live entertainment at De Lucia, located at 14123 Garfield Avenue. For background and to orient you on this location, in January of this year, the ABC issued De Lucia a license for onsite beer and wine consumption. Following that, in February, De Lucia opened for business. And as you can see from this aerial view, De Lucia is located on the west side of Garfield Avenue, just north of Rosecrans. De Lucia occupies a 4,430 square foot suite, and onsite parking includes eight parking stalls in the front and 19 parking stalls in the rear of the property. The applicants and principal members of the, of De Lucia are the father and son team of Jose and Joseph Hernandez. De Lucia operates seven days a week, from Sunday to Wednesday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Thursdays to Saturdays from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. In terms of the live entertainment request, De Lucia is asking permission to allow performances from a variety of musicians, DJs, and mariachi bands, limited only to the specific days and times as shown on this table. Any changes to this format will require your approval at a separate city council meeting. In addition, De Lucia will have to contract for their entertainment directly and cannot use other individuals or promoters for this purpose. We wanted to make sure that De Lucia is in control of who they hire for entertainment, specifically based on this agreed-upon format. And lastly, to ensure that De Lucia is adhering to this format, they will be required to submit a live entertainment calendar to the Public Safety Department on a monthly basis for review and approval. The approval process for this city council permit has had starts and stops over the last several months. Before this item's returned back to you tonight, it first came to you back in June. At that time, you directed that De Lucia submit an acceptable security and parking management plans. Subsequently, De Lucia was able to produce a satisfactory security plan, but was unable to come up with a parking plan to ensure enough parking spaces for its use. And of course, the major part of the parking plan was to secure an off-site parking agreement with a neighboring business to provide for additional parking capacity. As you recall, in September, you reviewed and accepted the security plan, but chose to remove this item from your calendar until a completed parking plan was in place. And that brings us back to tonight. After continuing work with De Lucia over the last month, staff believes an acceptable parking management plan is now in hand. De Lucia is proposing to supplement its existing 27 onsite parking stalls with 75 parking stalls through a property owner-to-property owner agreement with the business at 14537 Garfield Avenue. This additional parking will be allowed for De Lucia customers during permitted live entertainment days and times. With this plan, making a total of 102 parking stalls available for De Lucia should be more than sufficient for its use as a bar with a live entertainment component. One concern, however, is that the off-site parking at 14537 Garfield is a quarter mile away from De Lucia. In this aerial photo, De Lucia is at the top red box and the off-site parking is at the bottom red box. As such, and in order to make this parking arrangement effective, staff has conditioned De Lucia and they've agreed to provide free valet service for its customers. Because the valet service is essential to this parking plan, De Lucia will have to maintain an off-site parking agreement with a nearby business to provide the additional parking. Without such an agreement in place, De Lucia will not be allowed to conduct live entertainment. And you've probably noticed that a letter from the property owners, this one here, from the owner at 14537 Garfield stating his approval for the use of the parking lot was left for you on the dais prior to the meeting. This letter is meant as a correction to the letter that was attached to the staff report. The new letter specifies the days and times parking will be allowed for De Lucia customers. And finally, with your approval of the permit and the commencement of the live entertainment, of live entertainment at De Lucia, the Public Safety Department and the Sheriff's Department will begin conducting regular compliance checks. The permit will also be subject to a three-month review by the city council. At that time, staff will provide you with an update to De Lucia's level of compliance with all, with all of its conditions. And then at that time, you can determine the next level of compliance, the next compliance review period, whether that be another three months, six months, or a year. So with that, staff believes that with this parking management plan in place as presented, it is acceptable, and as a result, we're asking for your approval of this item. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Chun?
I just have one thing to say before we go ahead and move this, Joseph. You've been very persistent about this, and I hope you have great luck, and I hope everything works out well for you. And I'll move the, I'll move to approve the item.
Before we do, I'm sorry, councilman, we do have a speaker's card, Madam Mayor, just as a reminder. So Mr. Marcus Tony Laurent would like to come up and discuss this. Good evening.
Good evening.
I only had a comment if you guys were going to reject it again, to be quite honest.
No, we want to hear your positive comment.
All right, well, my wife and I, as you know before, as I come up here, like to visit De Lucia to have our date nights. I, I know that nightlife isn't a priority or a paramount concern, as you have many other issues, as chromium 6 is apparently very important. However, I think
However, I think that focusing on helping other businesses thrive, especially small businesses like Joseph's and his father's, should be important. And keeping our community's money within our community should also be important. So I hope that when you vote tonight, you dwell on that and help us to keep that money here, because I like to keep my money where I'm at. That's why we put it in banks, right? Keep our money where it's at. So anyway, think about that. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
And the Hernandez family, I want to see you succeed as well. And I will be visiting you. Empanadas are my favorite. So anyway, so patronize this restaurant, they have delicious food. So any comments? Another, or there is another public?
No, the next one is on item 12.
Okay, any other comments?
I just want to know when they're going to have their first live music band, because I love live music. So let me know, because I'd like to attend.
Okay, Joseph, you have orders. Okay.
Don't open a tab for us, Joseph.
It's okay, Gerald's going to cover it for me.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hofmeyer. Do I have a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 12. Item 12, request for installation of a limited-time parking zone at 8029 Rosecrans Avenue. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this next one is a request for a curb to be painted green in front of a business on Rosecrans, just east of Paramount Boulevard. And our new Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, will handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, we have received a request from Mr. John Paul Drayer, who's in the audience today, property owner of 8029 Rosecrans Avenue, to install a limited-time parking zone on the north side of Rosecrans, east of Paramount Boulevard, shown on the map in green. As you can see, Paramount is on your left, Orizaba on the right, and Rosecrans there at the bottom. The applicant indicated that the parking in this area is often impacted and on-street parking is limited for their customers and vendors who frequent the restaurant and neighboring businesses. In addition, there are residential units to the north and east of the restaurant. As such, the property owner requested that the two-hour parking only be enforced between normal business hours so as to not impact the residents who live nearby from being able to utilize these parking spots in the evening. Staff feels, sorry, I meant to show you this. Staff feels that this is a good faith effort on behalf of the property owner to make this work for all parties involved. If approved, 55 feet of curb would be painted green and appropriate signage indicating the area is a two-hour parking zone will be installed. As you can see with the green line, there is approximately two car lengths directly in front of the restaurant and a third space to the right of the driveway. At their September meeting, the Public Works Commission recommended to the city council approval of the request. A notice indicating the city council will hear this item was sent to the adjoining businesses and residents. This concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
And we do have a speaker's card, just in case Mr. Drayer would like to speak.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Drayer?
For me.
Okay, may, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the item.
Second? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 13, Proposition 6, repeal of Senate Bill 1 transportation funding. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, California's gas tax was increased by the state legislature last year. In response to this, there will be a measure on the November ballot called Proposition 6 that voters will vote on to repeal the gas tax increase. If the voters vote yes on this measure, they want the gas tax increase taken away and for it to return to the pre-2017 level. If voters vote no, they want the gas tax to remain in effect. The gas tax increase, otherwise known as SB 1, has given funds to the state and to local governments to pave streets and fix bridges. As a result, many cities and government agencies have come out opposing Prop 6. So tonight, we would like your direction on whether or not you'd like for us to draft a resolution opposing Prop 6, or if you prefer to remain neutral on this item. And with you tonight is an updated agenda item that reflects, that better reflects the recommended action that I just had mentioned. So with that, I'll turn it over to Adriana Figueroa to handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, as you may recall, back in 2016, the state conducted a local streets and roads needs assessment statewide. This was an extensive analysis of transportation networks and road conditions, which also elaborated on funding needs. The assessment determined that cities and counties would need an additional $2 billion per year in funding statewide in order to maintain current road conditions. In fiscal year 2017, Paramount Pavement Management System identified 29 miles of arterials in local streets needing major pavement repair. This is, of course, a living document in some projects, as some projects get completed, others will surface, given their current road conditions at that time. Senate Bill 1, also known as SB 1, is a Road Repair in Accountability Act of 2017. This was passed by the California Legislature and became effective in 2017. It enacted transportation taxes and fees in order to address the aging transportation infrastructure. It provides approximately $5.2 billion per year statewide over the next 10 years. These new revenues are then split between the state and local governments. What does this mean for Paramount? Overall, SB 1 funds will provide Paramount with $15.6 million over the span of 10 years. In fiscal year 2018, we receive $352,514. In fiscal year 2019, we are scheduled to receive $992,235. And in fiscal year 2020, it will be $1.4 million that will be used to address local street rehabilitation projects. By the way, I should note a correction in the staff report on page one. The staff report indicates that $15 million will be going to local governments, when it should read that $15 million will be coming to the city of Paramount over a 10-year span. This, sorry, oh, I guess the clicker moved too fast. This is a list of SB 1 projects for fiscal year 2019. It has a list of neighborhood streets resurfacing projects, and you can see it better on the map, which is coming up next. The map identifies, the yellow lines outline the projects from fiscal year 18, and the blue outlines the projects for fiscal year 19. As you can see, this funding addresses local residential streets that are in need of repair. The city, as it's the case with many cities statewide, continues to experience shortfalls in transportation-related funding. Without SB 1 funds, it would be difficult to maintain current road conditions, and we anticipate our roads will continue to deteriorate over time. SB 1 funds are essential in the city's effort to provide safe roads to our local community. It should also be noted that Proposition 69, which passed by voters in June of this year, protects all SB 1 funds if they can, meaning that they can only be used for transportation, transportation-related projects. So this brings us to what is Proposition 6. Prop 6 will be on the November 2018 ballot and will essentially repeal SB 1 funds. It will require voter approval for all gas and vehicle tax initiatives. The League of California Cities opposes Proposition 6, given the need for transportation funding, and is asking cities to oppose this measure. Many cities have already done this, and those are listed in the attachment provided with the staff report. If Proposition 6 passes this November, crucial funding for maintenance of transportation infrastructure will be lost. This will severely impact the scope of future arterial and neighborhood resurfacing projects. As an example, given the fact that SB 1 provides approximately half of our funding for transportation infrastructure projects, so what would normally take us 10 years to complete will now take us 20 years if SB 1 funds go away, essentially prolonging the time that streets identified in our pavement management system are to be addressed. Staff recommends city council provide direction regarding this matter. And this concludes my report. Christine Guerrero from the League of California Cities is here today, and her and I will be available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Figueroa or Christina?
Yeah, I have some, but Lori, you have some, too?
I do, but I can wait.
Okay. John, is it, do we usually do stuff like this, approve or kind of push a proposition? I mean, this is a, I would be in favor of this, but, you know, all the money that they're going to collect, but only 40% of it is going to go, is stay in for transportation, for bridges and stuff like that, infrastructure? If I'm, am I right or am I wrong on that? I think that's true, isn't it?
We have Christine Guerrero from the League that can answer the funding question.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoffmeyer. I'm great, how are you all? Thank you. Christine Guerrero with the League of California Cities. Just to clarify, everything in SB 1 goes directly to transportation. So every dollar, it's $5 billion a year. About 1.5 billion goes to local governments and counties every year. 1.5 goes to the state transportation system. So if you've noticed that the 710 has been repaved in certain sections, those are your SB 1 dollars at work. And then the remaining goes to transit and other competitive grant programs solely for transportation.
Does that answer your question?
You believe that's going to happen?
Yes, I do. You know why? Because if you recall, in 2010, Paramount was pretty, the members of the council were very influential in passing Proposition 22, which protected your local government funds. What Proposition 69 did in January, in June, excuse me, was to protect the small amount that was, the new amount of SB 1 that wasn't already protected under Prop 22. So we have ironclad protections. You and I know the state likes to take all of that money from local governments. Before we made an agreement to SB 1, we made sure that that money stays local, that you use it to repave and resurface your local streets and roads, which is already happening, and that it cannot be raided, borrowed, stolen in any case, any of your SB 1 funds.
Sounds good, okay.
Councilmember Gillan?
Well, I think the item before us was to see which direction we wanted to take, right? Stay neutral or be a proponent of the bill. My thought is, we have 4.5 square miles in the city of Paramount, and we are a working-class community being taxed up the you-know-what, as it is. And I think we should just stay neutral, because I'm not a proponent of taxing working-class people who, I think the statistics were, two people working in a family bring in, let, the average is less than $40,000 a year. So we're going to get these things done with or without SB 1. It may take a little bit longer. But if you look at the quality of life for the people who are working day-to-day just to pay their rent, $1,000, $1,600, $1,700 for a one- or two-bedroom apartment or a duplex, they cannot afford to be taxed anymore. So I feel that if it passes without us, then great, but I don't think we should put that before our city, our voters. I'm not in favor, I'm in favor of staying neutral, and I think that's what the proposal was, to stay neutral or be a proponent thereof.
Okay, do you have any comments, Mr. Hanson?
Excuse my ignorance, maybe is a good way to start this. Some of the money that's being, and I hate to put it this way, but I don't know any other way to do it, is for this high-speed train. How much is going to that?
Absolutely not. None of it goes to the high-speed rail. Absolutely none of it. All of it is for locals, all of it is for local transportation projects, the state highway system, or transit, meaning your metro lines, Metro's getting money, the Equirapid Transit is going to get $335 million dedicated from this. None of it goes to high-speed rail. That is separate. This is all for road maintenance and transit. So this isn't to create new roads, this is just to repair the status of your current road condition.
Part I understand, but I thought I had read something that some of this was going to be psyched off.
None of it is, absolutely none goes to high-speed rail.
Our governor's train.
We don't have enough stake in the game, I don't feel.
Well, in the assessment, it states that 29 miles of our local streets need major street improvement, and that we would receive $8.4 million over the next 10 years for our streets and to continue beautifying our community. So I'm personally in favor of giving direction to staff to oppose Proposition 6, all the thousands and thousands of monies that we are going to be receiving from the state for the residents of this community. I'd rather have them drive down on paved streets as opposed to potholes. So I'm totally in favor. And there's many of the organizations that are opposing this, that our cities are part of, California Contract Cities, the Southern California Association of Governments, Los Angeles County Division, League of California Cities. When we stand together, we are strong. And this is thousands and thousands and millions of money coming to our community. So as your mayor, I'm in favor of a resolution opposing Proposition 6. What is your pleasure?
I would just want to say one more thing, though, before we do that. You know, like Lori says, Paramount is a working-class city.
Right.
And there's not a lot of rich people.
No.
A lot of small businesses in this town. And somebody that has two or three trucks or something like that, many people have many more than that. It's going to make a huge impact on what it costs them to run their business, what it's going to cost the goods to be delivered and stuff like that. It's going to have a terrific impact on all the people in the city of Paramount, because prices are going to go up. Delivery's going to go up for their food, everything's going to go up. I understand we need good streets, and I'm in favor of good streets, but I have to agree with Lori, I don't believe the city should take a stand and go on either way.
Okay, stay neutral. I make a motion then that we vote to stay neutral.
A second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
No. Okay, at this time, let's go to item number 14, professional services agreement. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Keeping with our theme of running a financially stable city, this next item will evaluate just that. When it comes to the overhead costs that we calculate and the fees that we charge for certain services to the community, it will answer the question, are we actually capturing the true cost for the services that we as a city provide? Or do we need to increase some of these fees or look at them in a different way? So there are two studies that we like to conduct. One is called a cost allocation plan, and the other is a user fee study. So Karina Lamb, our finance director, will handle this item. Karina?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and members of the council, the item before you is the approval of an agreement with Willdam Financial Services to perform the cost allocation plan and user fee study. As you know, the city takes great pride to keep our fees low and affordable. This is something the residents and business community have long appreciated. Examples are across the board in all departments, from recreation, water utility, public works, to community development. I wanted to bring to your attention to many of the planning fees that are being charged in other agencies, but we do them for free. For example, for residential construction approvals, where our planning department staff reviews and correct plans, ensures plan corrections are made, work alongside with building and safety, and inspect properties. They even write administrative action reports for owners for lending and construction purposes. All of them, we do it for free. Also, there are no fees for businesses to apply for business banner display, special events, or grand openings, even for zoning verification. In recreation, we provide many services and program, as you well know, and mommy and me, classes are free. Another example is our Yarcell permit that handles by our customer service department. We also process it for free as well. As for low-cost services, again, these are just a few examples. We charge a $10 fee when a business is supplying permits for live entertainment, food trucks, taxi services, security guard services, even though it may take months of our staff time to review and bring the items to Planning Commission and City Council for consideration. Also, developers and architects often are shocked to hear how low our fees are for zone changes, development review, conditional use permits, et cetera. In a public works arena, we charge low fees for driveway or wheelchair ramp inspections. Before we move on, I do want to point out that waterway study is being done separately because of the Prop 218 requirements. Since we lost the redevelopment agency as the state abolished all in California, we lost about $5 million a year in revenues. Despite reorganization, tightening our belt, and other measures that we have taken, when we forecast for the we forecast for the future, we see that expenditures are outpacing revenues. So to keep and maintain our long-term fiscal sustainability, our staff is recommending to do a cost allocation plan and user-fee study. So what is a cost allocation plan? It is a tool in which a city can factor in administrative and indirect services costs throughout cost of providing programs and services. Allocated costs include citywide overhead expenses, which can be used in a calculation of payable hourly rate for grants, fees, federal reimbursement purposes. This ensures the city is utilizing comprehensive overhead rates, and we accurately account for the true cost of providing different programs and services within city operations. The last cost allocation plan was updated in 2011. As for the user-fee study, using the data from the cost allocation plan, this calculates the full cost of providing services, including direct and indirect costs. This compares the fees we charge to the actual cost of providing the services. In addition, it ensures that we comply with the Government Code Section 66014. Now, these two comprehensive studies will take some time to complete. This is our first time to do a user-fee study. We estimate that it will take at least six months for us to complete. This is going to be not just finance department involving this project. Citywide staff will be interviewed and to provide different information to the company so that we can come up with the true cost of doing business. Our hope is that we will be able to incorporate some recommendations at the next budget cycle for your consideration. It is a common practice that we do both cost allocation plan and user-fee study together. The user-fee study uses the data from the cost allocation plan to ensure that applicable costs are included in the calculations. Therefore, a thorough understanding of the document is required. When the same consultant prepares those reports, that knowledge is inherent, which results in fewer consulting hours and lower costs to the city. Under the city's purchasing policy, professional services, which often include areas of expertise, they are not subject to competitive bidding process. However, staff did reach out to three firms, and here are the fees respectively. Matrix, $33,000. Revenue and Cost Specialist, $42,000. Wildan Financial Services, $37,045. While Matrix appears to be the lowest bidder by about $4,000 when compared to Wildan Financial Services, staff determined that Wildan Financial Services is the best firm for the studies. Staff finds that Wildan is more proactive and responsive when we started the project, when we inquire about the studies. In addition, Wildan provides these services to many municipal agencies in the past -- over our past decade. So in addition to compare our fees to the actual costs of doing business, Wildan will be able to provide us an idea of where we are, our fees compared to many agencies, similar agencies in our region. In addition, Wildan Financial Services is the only firm not only providing consulting services, but they also providing contract staff to public agencies. The direct experience that city staff provide them with firsthand understanding of city operations, this is uniquely useful in determining the full cost associated with service delivery, also in developing schedules that are easy to communicate and implement. Currently, appropriation of $10,000 is budgeted for these studies. If this is approved, adjustment will be made to reflect actuals at media budget. With that, it is recommended the City Council approve the professional services agreement with Wildan Financial Services to perform the cost allocation plan and user-fee study for $37,045. This concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Karina?
Karina, I have a question. When Wildan does this cost comparison, and in the past, you've compared us to cities like Cerritos, which there's no way you can compare Paramount to Cerritos. What cities are you -- have they suggested they're going to compare us to?
You know, we haven't started the process yet, and -- but I was -- I did ask this question, and they said that we could choose cities that operate about the same way, contract cities, similar demographics, similar to the class and com that we do. There is some criteria we can pick, and so we can compare ourselves to, but that's not the main goal of this plan, this study. The main goal really is to make sure that what we charge is not more than the cost of providing a service. And if we are charging way lower than our actual cost, there are areas that we can propose for changes. But because we're doing this study, we're working with Wildan, and they have a lot of knowledge of what's happening in other agencies. One added benefit is that we can see where we are compared to other cities. Just like Waterway Studies, we compare ourselves to other cities every, you know, every year to see where we are. So I think it's good information to have.
Any other questions for Karina?
Make a motion to approve the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Item 15, facility use agreement with the American Red Cross. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Our friends at the Long Beach Red Cross are looking for a place to store one of their emergency shelter trailers. We have some vacant space in a utility lot that's behind Paramount Park where we'd like to allow them to store it. The benefit to this is our -- the close proximity to our emergency shelter at the Paramount Park Community Center should a natural disaster occur. So we see this as a very big win-win, and with that, I'll turn it over to David Johnson, who will handle the item. David?
Thank you, John. Mayor Martinez and council. Yes, as John mentioned, we have, for us tonight, a chance to provide an emergency shelter facility or emergency shelter trailer at Paramount Park. Obviously, this is a benefit to the Red Cross themselves. The only shelter they really have in our local area is in Long Beach on the south side of the 91 freeway. In the case of emergency where there is actually a collapse of the 91, they don't have a shelter on the north side of the freeway. So it's to their benefit to have additional shelter trailers placed around the area, and so we would be the next one. As John mentioned, it's obviously a benefit to the city of Paramount. If there's an emergency that happens in Paramount, we have that shelter directly on Paramount Park, which is where we would open up a shelter in the gym and at the community center. And with that, we're asking your approval of this item. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for David?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Item 16 will be tabled, Classification and Composition Study update, to our October 16 meeting. So at this time, are there any councilmembers who would like to give state any comments or reports?
Just real quick. A community member, Manny Alcaraz, reached out to me today and wanted me to let everybody know that there will be an unofficial Paramount High School reunion at Paramount Park. People could just bring whatever lunch they want, and they will be gathering from 10:00 to 8:00 at Paramount Park for a PHS reunion this Saturday. And then also, I just want to thank Arti for his research and his concern for the city of Paramount, and it's much appreciated.
Any comment?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay.
I just want to say that I was at the JPA session down in Carlsbad with Assistant City Manager and the mayor and Lori, and I thought it was a very informative session, and I thought it was well-attended. And I'm not just putting in a hurrah for the JPA, but I think they do a great job for the city and different things like that. And in the last week, I've had the -- I've been able to go to all the restaurants in Paramount on the new place there. And I've been to the Pizza Press, the Habit, and everything. And I asked them, I says, at the Pizza Press, I says, "How are things going?" And he says, "It's just far above expectation."
Wonderful.
And I go in there and get some shrimp, bring home from the stinking crabfish or crawdad or whatever it is, and --
Crawfish.
Crawfish. And I ask him, I says, "How's it going?" And he says, you know, he says, "Paramount and Downey are just phenomenal in the way their stores operate and stuff like that, and the people support it." So I think, hey, we made -- I think we hit a home run on the restaurants we put on the corner. I would like to see the other two busier, but at least we're three out of five.
That's great. I also attended the JPA conference a couple weeks ago, and one thing I learned about in more detail was the importance of complying with the Americans with Disability Acts on the ADA. In Paramount, we're taking all the necessary steps to comply with ADA, and we want to ensure access to public facilities for all our students. And also, I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you. On Sunday, October 21st, will be the Dia de las Muertos, hosted by Tepic Sister City.
And one thing else, Diane, I might say. You know, since we're on YouTube now, I just want to say hello to Gene, because he watches us on YouTube every -- all the time out there in Fontana where he moved to, so anyway.
Hi, Gene. We miss you. Okay.
Madam Mayor, we do -- I'm sorry, staff comment? We do.
Okay.
And I'm going to take over Vice Mayor Hanson's role here about mosquitoes, so at the last council meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion during councilmember comments about our mosquito outbreak here in Southern California. So there were some questions by councilmembers about what the city has done to advertise and promote what is going on out there. So before you hear is a list of all the stuff that we've done to date to try and keep the public informed about the mosquito outbreak. So everything from handing out flyers to Neighborhood Watch meetings. We did stuff on social media. We also did an article in the Around Town, which goes to all the addresses here in Paramount. We also have an article that's going to be coming in the Pulse Beat about the mosquito outbreak, and we'll also have -- we also have a story on our website with links to both the vector control and county health. So with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. I put a little windmill in my yard, so it blows all the mosquitoes from my yard all the way down towards Lori, so I don't have to worry.
I knew you did that, Darrell. I already knew that.
Okay, I adjourn this meeting. We'll go into the Successor Agency for the Paramount Redevelopment Agency. May I have roll call of councilmembers, please?
Councilmember Gillan?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here.
Concern calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
At this time, I adjourn our meeting to November 6, 2018. Good night, everyone.
Good night.